We're moving property second, and we move into open session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it, we're now in open session. Whereas Essex County School Board has convened a closed meeting of this state pursuant to an affirmative record vote, and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and... Whereas Section 2.2.371-1, A1 of the Code of Virginia, requires a certification about this school board that such closed meeting was conducted with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Essex County School Board hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion convened in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. The Board Clerk will certify board members.
Mr. Whitaker?
I certify.
Mr. Proxton?
I certify.
Ms. Bundy?
I certify.
Mrs. Sidner?
I certify.
The Clerk of the Board would now do the roll call.
Mr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mr. Proxton?
Here.
Ms. Bundy?
Here.
Mrs. Sidner?
Here.
At this time, retired Essex County Public Schools Administrative Assistant and current substitute teacher, administrative assistant, Ms. Hannah Haley, will give us the application.
Lord, this day, we come to you asking to start our meeting off today, so we conduct our matters like with Mr. Whitaker saying, of matters of business, and I do ask you to guide our hearts and our minds in this fairness, fairness and the right thoughts and speech. Lord, we need your wisdom upon all the activities and anything that needs to be said before you tonight of affairs, so that we can be successful and conclude with loving each other and knowing that we've done the right thing and fairness.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I get a motion on closed session agenda item?
I make a motion to approve the personal agenda as presented regarding six terminations, resignations, retirements, sixteen appointments, fifteen supplements, extra assignments, one transfer, and ten volunteers.
Is there a second?
Second.
As we move in property second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. And now we go down to the superintendent's report and all recognitions.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is the board, and guests, administrative staff, faculty members. I'd like to give a quick report update on our 22th graduation rate. We received some uplifting news, and so I'd like to share that quickly. So not only did our high school graduation rate exceed the state's overall graduation rate, EHS surpassed all state monitored high school metrics pertaining to the graduation rate of seniors during spring 2023. EHS beat the state metrics in all subcategories such as graduation that is aggregated by gender, race, ethnicity, students with low socioeconomic status, and students with disabilities. So not only did the graduation rate exceed the state, we exceeded the state in all subcategories as well. The state cohort 2023 on-time graduation rate was ninety-one point nine zero. Essex High School graduation rate, ninety-eight percent. Yes, yes. The state cohort 2023 dropout rate was five point four zero percent. The Essex High School 2023 cohort dropout rate was point nine five. So I'd like to... This cannot be taken for granted. I have come from a place where the graduation rate was in the low eights. And so the idea that Mr. Barfield, his staff, and students, and families and parents have helped us attain this level of graduation is substantial. A lot of places would like to experience a ninety percent graduation rate. So, Mr. Barfield, kudos to you, to your team, to your students.
Thank you.
So, of course, additionally, as you all know, we're studying culture and climate, and I'd like to recognize this is Groch who identified a gentleman by the name of Dr. Blizzard, who did a culture and climate primer for our administrative staff on September the 12th. It went over extremely well, and so we're looking to partner with Dr. Blizzard to see what we can do further to improve culture and climate. System of our accountability and structure, as I've mentioned before, we are currently looking at our structures. Now, of course, as we had indicated on prior meetings, our accountability structure, our social model has resulted in the progress that we have achieved. However, we're looking for a balanced approach as well. So we have enlisted the help of Dr. Heather Poffier, who is an expert in accountability systems and school improvement. And so she will work with us and look at potentially less onerous ways of continuing to move the achievement mark while at the same time striking a greater balance. So we will keep you all updated on that. We had our first meeting of the superintendent's advisory group today. Lots of great feedback and everything, and I found out that while we have a breakfast party that we provide, staff members want us to bring them a different breakfast, maybe Chick-fil-A, so... But it was, it was great, very great, great discussion, very transparent, and so we look forward to that having a positive effect on culture and climate. Lastly, of course, a ribbon-cutting ceremony scheduled for this Friday at the high school in our athletic complex at 4:00 p.m. While we have certainly invited guests of dignitaries, past board members, and who've served, and members of the Athletic Improvement Committee, and this is an event that's open to the public. And so we're looking, we're excited about unveiling all of the components of the renovation, from the lighting system, the concession stand, the track, the stadium seating, all the fencing and everything. It's come together very well, and I think we're going to reveal to the public a showpiece. I'd like to provide again to the public for the public's verification, it's the only eight-lane track in this area, the only one. And so based on leadership of this board and the hard work of our staff, we've been able to get this project complete.
Yes.
That's all I have to share.
Okay, well, I add to your report.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a recognition, but you go ahead and...
Let me do this, because this is more of what you're saying. I want to say to all of you out there, we, when I came here in sixty-nine, we were playing football out here. Okay, that's why I'm talking about this. We played football out here until nineteen seventy-six. It was then that we were able to grace what is now Essex High School facility. But little did we know, little did we know, what this thing will look like now. There is no comparison. I mean, we have a dirt track. Some of you, all of you attended Essex, know what I'm talking about. But to have eight lanes, that speaks tremendous, it's something that this county, the parents, the taxpayers, everybody could be proud of the fact Essex High School put its finest out there, and some of which actually on that track became state champion. Imagine having our first name potentially the state champion this year, this academic school. So I'm sorry, I didn't instill some of your thought.
No problem. Good evening. I come to make with celebration and recognition of actual board members for their commitment to effective school board governance through participation in the VSBA School Board Academy for the 2021 through 23 school year. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes Ms. Garland Bundy for award of recognition. Next we have Dr. Thomas for award of excellence. And finally, we have Mr. Whitaker for award of distinction. And thank you to each of you, for all of you do to support us here, the schools. We certainly appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we get down to the part of consent agenda. Everyone's had their copy. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
As we move in property second, that we accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I think I heard all eyes. Eyes have it, motion is carried. Now we come down to public comments. At this time, we invite public comment. Public comment at board meeting is just one of many avenues for communication, and the board recognize and appreciate the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. Board invite members of the public who wish to address the board to submit their comments to the Clerk of the Board or later than twelve p.m. on the day of the meeting. The board will allow each individual to speak up to five minutes to express their views. Please respect that time limitation. The Clerk of the Board will enforce the time limitation. The board chair will solicit generic responses from board members at the conclusion of public comment, and may direct members of the Essex County Public Schools Administration to investigate such concerns or to consult with the member of the public who raises that concern. I want to emphasize this first part of that sentence, that the board chair will solicit generic responses from board members who wish, plan, or desire to make comments at the conclusion of the public comment period. The board also encourages members of the public to reutilize the process for lodging complaints against individuals contained in the applicable school board policy before bringing those complaints to the board as a whole. The public may feel free to contact individual members of the board directly who are concerned if desired. I want to emphasize that, that, you know, there are five of us, and so whether you want to call me or reach out to other board members, feel free to reach out at any and all time. Why do I say it that way? Because to get responses for the, you know, in other words, when you comment here, you comment, but if you want responses regarding your comments, it is critical that you contact one of the board members, and then within a certain time limitation or a timeframe, those persons responsible for responding can do that in a hopefully a timely manner. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be declamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to the beginning of your comment, please state your name and voting district to the school board, and particularly direct your comments at yours truly, if you don't mind. The first individual on the list is Mrs. Hazel Hickman.
Chairman Whitaker, Vice Chair Proxton, board members, Clerk Saunders, Dr. Thomas, good evening. A report was given at the September eleventh school board meeting. This report was to give information on the SOL progress of the Essex County School Division for the 2023 school year. Accolades were given to students, teachers, and employees. However, many have left the division and are again still leaving. Since the last meeting, you have lost teachers, guidance counselor, and support staff. It was stated in 2022 Essex schools hit a high rank of one-eleven in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The average scores for Virginia was given, then a report on the local school divisions around Essex were given. It also stated Essex has made progress. Why have you not shared the division SOL scores with the public? When I say SOL scores, I mean the pass rate percentage for math, science, social studies, and reading for each grade level. All we hear is ranking. Board members, have you received the pass rate for each school by grade, by subject area? Not being an educator, you may need to do a little research on standards of learning, scores, not rankings. The division is in the CIP Comprehensive Instructional Program. The CIP is a consortium of public school divisions in Virginia working collaboratively to improve school achievement as measured by Virginia Standards of Learning Assessment. How many school divisions are members, school board members? Do you know how many counties and the state are members of CIP? Do you know? You can't ask me. Well, let me enlighten you. There are a hundred and thirty-four school divisions in the state of Virginia. Fifty-nine school divisions are members, and seventy-five school divisions are non-members. Only three divisions in this area are members of CIP. My question is, how can Essex School Division rank one oh eight in the state? I would like for someone to explain the data that was used... I would like for someone to explain the data that was used could come up with the ranking of one oh eight. It was also stated ironically, Westmoreland County had tremendous turnover last year. That is not true. Westmoreland added positions. Westmoreland has structure and accountability, and the employees are treated with respect and dignity. And yes, all schools have been fully accredited for the last six years. Westmoreland lost four teachers and five employees to retirement and seven teachers to resignation. Westmoreland County added fourteen new positions to the division. Westmoreland did not lose forty-plus employees to resignation or termination like Essex. There is no gain in comparing Essex to other school divisions. It is also unprofessional to keep represent secret tenders from other divisions. Why are we still losing employees? A part-time employee requested a full-time position that was open in her department. In six years, she never received an evaluation of her performance. However, this year, she was given an evaluation and was told she did not get the position because her school was low. How can a new administrator, who knows nothing about the department, give a low evaluation to a six-year part-time employee, overlooks their own and hires someone from another district? Board members, reach out to your employees and find out what is going on in the schools. Communicate with all staff members, not a select few. Your employees are in need of your help. Don't turn your back on your employees. And I forgot, my name is Hazel Hickman and I'm from the North District. Sharon, I have a copy for you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson, are you still? Okay, thank you. All right, Reverend Canagius Holmes.
Evening, board members.
Evening.
I have three quick items, and the first two are related. First, I want to tell you to say congratulations for the good work we've seen in the newspaper, for the comments you made up of the graduation rates, the work we're doing on accreditation. It takes a team, and I thank you for the hard work you're doing. Which leads me to my second point, part of the hard work and accomplishments you've made is because you've also had public comment. I'm going to still ask that you go back and allow us to sign up on the day of when we speak. The current policy that you have, while yes, people can sign up, it has become too sterile, too sterile right now. Because folks feel like, well, I didn't sign up in time, there's no need to come. Yes, we can go and talk with any one of you, and I've done to many of you. But that still shouldn't take away from the fact of being a public comment. Sometimes people are intimidated by talking one-on-one. Whereas if they talk in this setting, they feel good, their family's with them, or friends are with them, and they want to talk public comment. You all are all professionals. And as professionals, and there are standards on how we can speak, let the public comment. Because their parents is, you don't want to hear what's from the public. And your success that you've made thus far, the last since I've been here, is because public comments were there. You've only had no public comments for what, almost two months now? So when you cut back to one meeting a month, add no public comments, your parents said you don't really want to hear, and everyone is not comfortable coming to your office. And I thank you for making that available to us. And the third thing is this, um, last week, at a meeting, at a meeting at the school, high school, the doors were locked at seven o'clock. And we were told that the reason, the authority to lock those doors was given by the school board. And I've heard other times, different things, meetings were changed, and the comment was, it was the school board. So my question to the school board is, who speaks for the school board? I would assume it's the chair, but I'm hoping that you're having some discussion. So when comments are made like that, and someone says the school board made that comment, then we know who made that comment. Because we don't want that bad press to go out there. You're making great progress in the county. As our schools improve, more people will come, the community will continue to grow, and I thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you, sir.
Reverend Dr. Genar Pauls.
Good evening, Dr. Quarles, Central District. Chairman Whitaker, Vice Chair Proxton, Ms. Bundy, Mr. Win in his absence, and Ms. Sidney, and Dr. Thomas, and Ms. Saunders. I am standing here today on behalf of the band boosters and also Ms. Vicklin. And I just want to, I'm going to make my comments, but I want to read just a passage that the band director, Ms. Vicklin, placed on Facebook. And it's for the public, and it says, "I am absolutely happy, and it was an incredible day in Bowie Merrill." Thank you, Mr. Billy Bennett, Director of Bands at Bowie State University, for inviting the Essex High School Trojan Band to meet your students, see the band room, and to experience Symphony of Soul in Action at your twenty twenty-three homecoming. Additionally, thanks to Virginia State University Director of Bands, Dr. Taylor Earl Whitehead, for meeting with students. There was just something special about the H B C U experience homecoming at Bowie State University on this past Saturday. Now unfortunately, there was an incident that evening, but our students were probably here back in Essex at home. Also, I want to, just for those who don't know, the Essex Band was invited this past Saturday to Bowie State University for their homecoming to meet with their band. It was a beautiful experience. These young people, some of them have never been to a college campus other than when we took them to Shenandoah University. Some of them have never been to an H B C U, and they had a beautiful time. Ms. Pamela Floyd, who's in our audience, she went as a part of the team and staff of the band. I want to also say that the band members had an opportunity to get coaching by Bowie State's director and Virginia State University's band director fell in love with our young people, gave them a website for them to apply for full scholarships for the band students that wanted to attend, and offered to mentor students at Essex High School Band. And also, I have to give accolades to the president of Bowie State University. She left her presidential tent, didn't have a golf cart, but walked a distance to meet our young people before they got on the bus, and her name is Dr. Bro. And she indicated if there are any students from Essex High School in Topahad in Virginia, my three minutes is up, she would love to have them come to Bowie State. But I just want to thank all of you, the administration, Dr. Thomas, Mr. Barfield, the community, for just all that they do for our students. Our goal is to expose them, our goal is to help them decide that they want to continue their education. And I just want to give thanks to everyone, also to Ms. Gwaffney. Janette Gwaffney and Ms. Vicklin coordinated this effort. And Leila Gwaffney, who is a freshman at Bowie State, came from Essex, graduated last year. Because of Governor's School, she is now a junior in her first semester.
Yes.
So I just want to thank all of you, for all the students, for all young people. And please visit the Essex High School Band Booster's Facebook page.
Yes.
And thank you for not telling me to sit down.
Okay, board members, comments at this time?
Can I say something? I just want to recognize both Mr. Barfield and Mr. Gross, because the transportation was mighty. And so, you know, we said Mrs. Vicklin wants to do this, figure it out, and then they got it together, so I feel like we recognize it.
Okay, board members, comments?
Yeah, yes, five minutes per speaker, for future planning purposes. But thanks for the wonderful positive comments. One comment was made, I think I either misunderstood it or it was a mis-speak, but we have not, there have not been meetings with no public comment. That's inaccurate. Folks, all we have done is move the deadline from around seven P M. to twelve P M. on the same day. That is the net effect of the change. We've moved up the deadline. I would submit it's easier now, you can email Ms. Saunders, you can call her, you can text her, and then still show up at seven. So I fail to see how it's any more difficult to come and speak. That is one thing. And then on the substantive comments that were made, that did a lot of good information that I think are answerable questions. So I would ask it, Dr. Thomas, if you'll give us answers to some of the substantive comments that were made in the first.
Well, I stated that a hundred and thirty-four school divisions, or a hundred and thirty-two, we'll start there. So Comprehensive Instructional Program was created by the school divisions in the southwest Virginia as a counterweight to larger school divisions with more resources. And so the Comprehensive Instructional Program works not only with the members, but also with the Virginia Department of Education. They work closely with Dr. Hurt, he is well-regarded and well-respected. One of the reasons why we use them is because when you look at the composition of the schools of Comprehensive Instructional Program, they are high performers, high-performing school divisions. I think anyone who talks with Dr. Hurt can quickly see that he is a state and national authority amongst the business. So we utilize this program because it's very expensive, it's supposed to be two thousand dollars. And one benefit that comes to mind is that the the teachers that have come around the table to develop the curriculum, and in particular, the assessments, only can we get to the table with a proven track record of success. So Dr. Hurt provides statistics for participating school divisions, but all school divisions. As a matter of fact, I've utilized the statistics to educate some of my superintendent colleagues. And the last thing, I think it was brought up, was the turnover of Westmoreland County. What, last year, the State Department provided a report of school division vacancies. Last year, we were at one percent. And the University of Virginia produced a report, and Mrs. Gross can attest to this. Westmoreland County was listed on that report as one of the top twenty school divisions in the state of Virginia with high turnover. Now, I'm not saying that to disparage Westmoreland County. That comment is consistent with past comments that I've made, that high-performing title-one systems is difficult. No question about it. When you're trying to mitigate learning loss, when you're dealing with socio-emotional challenges, it is significant. So I think if you look at, King and Queen was on that list as well. But King and Queen has been historically a high-performing school, title-one school division. So the use, not to get too technical, but the use of the Comprehensive Instructional Program was something we decided to go through primarily because of the high predictive value of their benchmark assessment. So what that essentially means is statistically, when our kids take the benchmark assessments in preparation for the S O Ls, they have high predictive value. Now, if you talk to a lot of other school divisions, they talk about math, measure of active progress. Well, measure of active progress is a norm reference assessment. The benchmark testing we provide are criteria reference assessments. The S O L is a criteria reference assessment. So in order to provide our folks with a high predictive value on how they would do on an actual S O L test, use of a benchmark test provided by C I P, that is, criteria reference is the best approach. And so we have gone with them, I attribute the success that we've had with them. I know my colleague Carol Carter uses the Comprehensive Instructional Program, so it's a strong resource. I had recently received calls from Caroline, Frederickburg, Richmond County, all inquiring about the use of Comprehensive Instructional Program, simply because they have watched our movement. And they have seen that we have surpassed some of our limits, and so we attribute it to that. And any additional comments you all want to make, the Structural Program?
So the main thing is that it's a group of schools, a consortium, that are similar in size, similar in resources, similar in socioeconomic makeup of their students, and therefore, the tools that we came up, the methods are proven effective in this type of school with limited resources.
Absolutely, yep.
Any other comments?
Can someone speak on the behalf of the locking of the doors at seven?
I am, good speaker.
Okay.
Any other comments? First of all, it's unfortunate that we have the miscommunication, but I want to emphasize that as a chair of the Essex County School Board, I had no jurisdiction over the Board of Supervisors meeting. That was a Board of Supervisors meeting and not an Essex County Public School meeting. Which means they utilized that facility, yes. The other thing I want to emphasize, at no one time did I engage a police officer or in administrative staff to lock the doors, or emphasize that now. And yes, it was brought to my attention, I'm not denying that it was brought to my attention and others of us, that the doors had been locked. But I want to emphasize that at no one time did I direct or entice or anyone to lock doors. And I think the doors were unlocked later. But the bottom line is, it needs to be emphasized that I was not a part of that activity, would not have been a part of that. Because it's a public building, and I understand that people, some people even say, well, that's a fire marshal violation and all that. And I'm aware of that concern, but I do want to emphasize to the public here in Am that at no one time did I engage anyone or was I a part of a conversation to lock doors at that gathering. I would not have been a part of that. There's no way I would have been enticed or coerced into locking doors for a public event, and that's what that was. That was a public event put on to service the people of this community. So I apologize to you that someone's got offended, that should not have happened. And I would defend it to my death, never to lock doors at that high school, so I apologize. Okay, having said that, any other comments before we go down to action items? And I believe it's going to be, it's Griffin. All right, come on up, or is it saying that she'll come up there?
Come on down.
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman Whitaker, Vice Chairman Proxton, Ms. Bundy, Ms. Sidney, Dr. Thomas, Ms. Saunders, and Essex community. I'm here tonight to present to you information about our Special Education Advisory Committee and to ask for you all to appoint our members for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. So every school division is required to have a C Act as detailed in regulations governing special education programs for children and disabilities in Virginia. The state regulations say that a local advisory committee for special education, appointed by each local school board, shall advise the school board through the division superintendent. The major purpose of our C Act is to provide an opportunity for parents and other school board appointees to have a voice in the way the school division provides services to students with disabilities. So our C Act is comprised mostly of parents, we do have one teacher representative, and then Mr. Gross and myself, we are just consultants there, so we kind of facilitate anything that they need. We usually have topics for them, we had a meeting in September where we had Moms Emotion come, we did a presentation on disability waivers, which is very important to our families. So we kind of ask them what topics do they want, and I kind of try to facilitate with the chairperson to get people to come in. We also, of course, present to them in March our Special Education Annual Plan, you know, with our six-eleven, six-nineteen grants, and what that money is going to be used for. This past year, we also included them in a presentation on our inclusive practices plan that we came up with and created last year. So I believe you all have copies of, it said volunteer for one year. And I think you also have the copy of the members that we would like to be appointed, so I'm asking if you all will approve these members for our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Essex County Public School C Act. Did I have any questions for the board?
This is not an action item. Oh, I got the wrong person. Okay, because I'm looking at this and I don't, okay. Oh, here we go, okay, good, all right, very good. Okay, any comments?
I make a motion that we. I make a motion that we, number one, thank.
No.
No.
Make a motion that we thank these volunteers for being willing to, the willingness to do this and approve the list of CEAC volunteers as present.
My second.
It's been moving properly second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
As habit, motion has been carried. Don't see any nays. Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, I think we've read the information on it. Is this Dr. Burdright? Come on down.
Good evening to Chair Whitaker, your members of our school board, Dr. Thomas, and Ms. Saunders. I am here before you tonight to really introduce, so I'm going to have someone else come on down. That'll be Robin Didlake along with Meredith Dunn, who are our partners in our, in our Project Wonder that we have for our environmental literacy program with our meaningful watershed educational experiences. So I'm going to turn it over to them to share some things and then we'll take any questions that you all may have at this time.
Identify yourself again as you come up.
Sure. My name is Robin Didlake from Friends of the Rappahannock. And hi, I'm Meredith Dash. I'm with Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay.
All right, thank you.
Well, good evening, Chairperson Whitaker and members of the Essex County School Board. My name is Robin Didlake again, and I'm an environmental educator with Friends of the Rappahannock and a retired Caroline High School science teacher. And this is Meredith Dash, and she is from Alliance for the Bay. Hanover Caroline Soil and Water Conservation District holds a NOAA BEWIT grant. It's a building capacity grant, and we call this Project Wonder. The goal of the grant is to help school districts in the middle peninsula, Caroline, Essex, and Middlesex build equitable, sustainable, and systemic environmental literacy plans. Friends of the Rappahannock and Alliance for the Bay are partners on the grant. The Virginia Department of Education defines environmental literacy as having the knowledge, skills, and dispositions to solve problems and resolve issues individually and collectively that sustain ecological, economic, and social stability. 2022 and 2023 was year one of our grant. And during year one, we introduced the school administrators and community to the grant's goals. This was done through roundtables, community surveys, tabling at school and community events, and working with Dr. Burdright to build on what schools and teachers were already doing in the classrooms. Our survey showed that teachers valued outdoor learning, campus gardens, and building partner support. Administrators valued outdoor learning, student projects, and campus gardens. Overall, our survey showed that the Essex community values environmental education with a focus on outdoor learning. Through the survey, we identified community partners and concerns that assistance. Year two, which is the 2023-24 school year, this fall, we will work to form a steering committee made up of the community stakeholders, concerned citizens, and school district staff. This committee will help formulate the objectives of the environmental literacy plan. And we will work with the committee, Dr. Burdright, and the teachers to write the environmental literacy plan. We welcome your support of both the steering committee and the first version of the plan when we bring it back to you in the spring. And if you would like to join the steering committee, have any questions, or would like to meet with our team, please feel free to contact me or Meredith at the email address on this wire. Tomorrow, I'm excited to be working with your biology students at Belle Isle State Park. And then we have several other field trips planned for the fall and also for the spring.
Thank you.
Did you all have any questions for our team in regards to environmental literacy or the work that we're doing within the school division?
This is the first year of this partnership of Dr. Burdright?
Well, this is really year two, but the first year for our BEWIT grant that we earned on, as a school division, but also in collaboration with Friends of the Rappahannock. So they are one of our collaborative partners along with the ODU Center, the work of Dr. Farrell and Alexis Starr that work with us to engage our teachers in professional learning and development, as well as for our students who will have meaningful watershed experiences tied directly to our science and engineering practices that are a part of our new science standards of learning.
So the BEWIT initiative has been quite impactful. We have, our students have grown tremendously in progress. We've experienced a science instruction that's just been a game changer. So thank you for the continued progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. So this, we'll spend the rest of this year developing the literacy plan?
Yes.
And then what will happen? Will just continue to utilize the plan?
And so we'll implement that plan for multi-tiered. So it will be for teachers and that work through professional learning and how to strengthen students' understanding about the environment as a whole and how we can contribute to the community. Students will have that undergirding of those support standards through the 2018 science standards of learning. And then to engage our community as well as to ways that we can enhance our environment. And the work around is looking at not only just the Bay, Rappahannock, and so forth. But then it's also giving our students the opportunity to get outside and to be on and by water, which is really a part of a lot of the standards that they have to encounter on the standards of learning. As Dr. Thomas also alluded to as well, we saw tremendous gains in science, and particularly at Science V last year, about 17 points to be, about 17, it wasn't 17. 17 points to be exact. Of course, you know, SOLO data is publicly, you know, on the VDOE website, so you can see that growth as well. But the work with that is really a large, a large part attributed to the partnerships that we have with Friends of the Rappahannock through the ODU Center as well, because they continue to grow our teachers and our students, which is truly important to enhancing the work here that we're doing here as a division.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Blunt, come on up.
I have to say, it's been fun to watch the science adventure. You know, we started out small and then Burdright got hold of it. She has really, really connected us with partnerships, with grants, with great members of our own local community. So just a thank you to you as well. Got disco lights on one?
All right. There we go. Can you try to connect there?
I've got an extra cable.
Try, try not working.
Well, actually.
I used that one earlier.
I don't think it's long enough to make it over there.
Can you move your laptop down a little?
I know, I was going to hold it.
Oh, it almost worked.
How about that?
Please don't break.
And actually, the board has heard this, I can go probably quicker through it. Well, John, we're still there. I'm here tonight to talk to you about All in Virginia. The governor, Governor Youngkin, just a couple of weeks ago, announced a project called All in Virginia. And it was a very public announcement, committing several millions of dollars towards public education. And tonight, I just wanted to bring forth to you the proposal as to the governor's plan, how he outlines that we spend that money, and then share with you our allocation that we received and how we plan to internalize the boundaries there as well. I can just talk, John.
I'll get it working.
I'll talk through this.
Not this. Just give us the.
Okay. So very briefly, Governor Youngkin announced his plan. And he, and the plan is proposed to curtail the learning loss. And he identified three areas in which the target of that money should be spent in terms of looking at the best, the best way to move the needle. So the first piece is high-intensity tutoring. And so he called for all children in the state of Virginia that either failed an SOL or had subpart scores, is what they're termed, as lower, low levels of learning, the 447 range to 400, to all receive free public tutoring at no cost to the student. Students that actually failed their SOL was five hours per week of free tutoring. And students who fell in that, that low learning range were to receive three hours of tutoring per week. In addition, he asked that, the second piece is that money is spent towards the Virginia Literacy Act, curtailing the fact that the number one hindrance of our students is that they can't read. And so pulling up the ability to read on grade level being a central component of the money allocated. And then the final piece is chronic absenteeism. As you all are well aware, since the pandemic, attendance has really become an issue across the United States, not, not just Virginia. And so the focus of his All in Virginia plan is to focus in those three areas. And so we immediately began to work our plan and be able to enhance what we already have in place here based on similar beliefs and our philosophies. And so as we started, our allocation, you can see it on the screen here, based on those three categories, we were in around about $500,000 to be spent over a three-year period so long as we continue to engage in adverse services, which we do here in Essex. And so we have quickly defined our process for spending. The governor said that 70% of the money should go into high-intensity tutoring. So you'll see there the allocation for high-intensity tutoring. We have extended our after-school program. We already had an after-school program in place. We extended the time a little bit. But last year, we had 10 weeks and 18 sessions. This year, we'll have 19 weeks and 36 sessions, 38 sessions to be exact. So we're definitely doubling up on the amount of time. We have teachers that offer a direct instruction platform. So those are teachers teaching directly, reading, or math. And then we also have an enhanced learning platform. So the digital platform that looks at students' deficits and begins to backfill skills that students need. We have a digital support staff there as well to support that particular program. So a teacher will receive a group of students, of around about 20 students, and they'll also have this digital person of support with them. So for the first part of the program, it's a 10-to-1 ratio, which is outlined in the plan for All in Virginia. The teacher works with 10 students, one-on-one, on the content area. And then the other 10 students in the classroom are working on the digital platform, backfilling some skills that they have a deficit in, and then they trade midway through. And so we're trying to recognize this attention span of students, how long they can attend, plus make it a small group, a meaningful group, a teacher itself. The Virginia Literacy Act is 20% of the funding there. Next year, we will have two brand-new standards for implementation for teachers. Teachers will have to implement the math standards, new math standards, as well as new reading standards. That's an abnormality that typically does not happen within the same year. But the, the new governor has, has rushed the math standards and now has rushed the reading standards. So in order to be able to fund a textbook adoption for both in one school year, we'll, we'll tap into our Virginia Literacy Act funding there to be able to do that. We'll continue to offer professional development. And then ultimately, within two years, the Virginia Literacy Plan moves to grades five through eight as well. And so we'll continue to employ our research-based work with Dr. DeWitts to enhance our literacy plan into the middle school. And then finally, chronic absenteeism, Mr. Gross and his team have been working on this. With that particular money is 10% of the budget. And we're looking to fund attendance recovery groups. So after-school sessions for students that are at risk of attendance and helping them to recover some of that time that they have been absent, as well as Saturday sessions. So looking to hire support to come in and run those sessions so that students can make up time and see. And then home visit teams, teams that head out to chronically absent homes and meet with families and develop a plan of action to determine how we can get the students back in school. And so that is our, our fast adventure. We are guided by a timeline, so we were definitely moving quickly to, to get our plan in place and get the most out of the experience and opportunity and the funding that we received.
When do you anticipate getting it going?
So they're already moving. Dr. Burdright is leading the charge, so you know she didn't waste any time. We had, and our teachers have been phenomenal. We already have our three coordinators in place. We have all of our teachers ready to go and our digital curriculum providers ready to go. They have, they meet next weekend.
Right. So they will have professional learning on the 17th. And then also digital platform, professional learning as well on the 18th. That will be co-facilitated by myself as well as Ms. Demi Fulcher, our Instructional Technology Integration Supervisor. And then our students report on the 24th. And our teachers, paraprofessionals.
Yes.
Our support staff have been tremendous in signing up to be a part of the tutoring.
I thank y'all for moving forward on this. I, I've always been a proponent of giving all the assistance for tutoring party all on instead of putting the emphasis back at the first semester. Go ahead, start now.
And that was the beauty of the fund, the extra funding, it allowed us to go longer.
Thank you for that. The other thing, I did have Saturday school a long time ago, last centric. And I love the idea of Saturday school. And that kind of engaged, I shouldn't say kind of. My parents complained and came all the way to the schools kicking and screaming so they could drop the kid off and leave him.
Yes.
Know where he was.
Yeah, so you all remember on the 7th of September, we were invited to attend the governor's press conference, one of five school divisions in the state of Virginia. Yes. And we, I'm told by these folks that we are the first at the state of Virginia to have our, this plan submitted. That's right. Yeah, so who knows to stand for working so hard?
So one question though, is, is based on the percentage, I'm just surprised to see that the chronic attendance rate isn't a little bit higher.
So it's a governor's suggestion and recommendation and that's how we spend it?
Only, only that 10%? So we didn't have any control as far as the division, the percentage?
It was recommended, but in the questionings of that particular journey, your plan will be approved if your, if your spending is allocated 70, 20, 10.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Google third-party application changes, is that Mr. Barnes? That is, Mr. Barnes. Let me give you, just give you some information. Now, this is primarily just a disclosure, this is a change in Google policy. And so we thought it was prudent to make you aware of this, just for your education, just if you, you hear. So apologize to the layoff games on the agenda, but we want to make you aware of it as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I'll speak a bit more. So mainly, the, the reason is, as I get to this, you'll see we'll be blocking some things. And it isn't that, you know, we want to just be heavy-handed. It's, it's really a need for us to comply with certain things and do these changes. So the first thing, just I want everybody to keep in mind, because this is somewhat technical. But when we see those Google, sign-in with Google buttons on various websites, that's really what I'm, 90% of the time, what I'm talking about here will pertain to those little buttons that you see signing with Google on various webpages. So first, we'll take a little stroll back in history. So we'll talk about data privacy agreements. I might refer to them as EPAs. But data privacy, so EPAs have a tradition of requiring EPAs for our applications, effectively all the software that we use. My instruct, or instructional folks can attest that I'm always saying, hey, did we get that data privacy agreement signed so we can do business with that company? So historically, we've had a long tradition of requiring these. And more so than just protecting our data, what they also do is they allow the company to act as a school official on our behalf of the division, which allows them to obtain all the fields of our student data. We, we don't have to pick and choose which ones we can give. We can give them the full gamut of data that was required for a program that they might be using. So next, if I get back and I talk about the sign-in with Google button. So where there was an issue historically with these buttons aligned, there was no way to track them. There's no way to really see who's using them. If you have a Google account, as you know, you probably got a personal Gmail account. You can go anywhere, the New York Times, somebody using it as a sample. You click that button, you can sign in. It will sort of whisk you into their system just by clicking that button. So historically, this has been a problem for Google because we, as an end user of Google, have really no way of policing what people are doing as far as clicking them. But also, what, what is the data? We say, what data are they getting? You may click the button, but you may not really know what you're giving that company. So this has been a long-term issue for Google, and they've sort of solved it. But in their solution, it's going to require us to make some changes as well. So that's what we'll talk about. So what's changed with this? So Google's implemented a change that will force Google admin, basically the school, to approve these third-party apps for clicking on that button. So what that means for us is. So what that means for us is, starting October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, Google's effectively just going to block all third-party apps because they're giving us the ability to go in and hand-select and approve these. So how that affects us is is that since we have the option, we are going to need to block those requests to comply with various Virginia codes because we don't know specifically offhand what data they may be given. But since we are now the ones who have to approve those, we have to make sure we apply with those codes, not Google applying, since we previously did not have the ability to actually manage that. So just want to be very clear about that. So basically, we're going to have to take the stance that we're going to block all the third-party apps. And then, so what's the outcome of this, right? So we're blocking everything, that sounds bad. So effectively, the technology and the instructional team are going to need to work to create a method for staff to submit requests for third-party apps. So any of the buttons, like, for example, again, New York Times, if you want to click that button, they'll have staff have to put in a request and say, hey, we'd like the third-party app that button on the New York Times to work. So they'll have to submit an application for approval. We have to get a D P A or a data privacy agreement signed with that company, and then we could turn around and unlock that for them. Otherwise, we would not comply with the various Virginia codes. So it's unfortunate, but that's the reality that we have. So I know it's probably going to be a lot of blocking and a lot of work upfront, but we'll get through it.
So this will impact the number of access teachers have in certain websites, certain certain applications, and the slow accessibility of it, because in the past, we've had difficulty getting companies to sign off on our D P A. So just make you aware of it, just so that you know, just in case you hear chatter from state.
And I can speak to another thing I think we'd be hopeful to mention, too. So going down the line, in the various region, regional director of technology meetings, there's been discussion of a version one point seven and later a two point oh. What we do just publicly is we used to have our own custom from our school attorney data privacy agreement. And companies would be able to redline, oh, we don't like this, we don't want to have to alert you if there's a, you know, loss of that. They they would try to do all sorts of kind of squirrely things. So what we're going to look to do in the future is move, well, we've already moved to the standard state of Virginia data privacy agreement, that's what we currently use. And in the future, Virginia is actually looking to move to the national policy with inserting some specific Virginia laws. So that's good for us in one way because companies would no longer be able to redline and say, oh, we don't like this, we don't like that. We would specifically submit that to the company. If you want to do business with us, here's the D P A, sign it, return it, and that's it. It's a simple process, so it's not a lengthy process of back and forth. So hopefully, that will speed things up.
Board members, any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Next on the, I am on the agenda, indoor track, I guess, to Mr. Barnes.
So Mr. Barnes has been placed on standby to address potential questions. We were made aware, in fact, that the board wanted this item on the agenda.
Come on, come on.
Mr. Barnes, come on up. Just know a little bit about the people.
Just.
So I'm here to talk briefly about the indoor track. I was charged with the task of ascertaining the level of interest with our high school students for the track. So I did put out a survey, kept the survey open for about ten days. We had twenty total responses. We had nine, excuse me, three ninth graders, seven tenth graders, and five eleventh and twelfth graders, respectively. Out of those twenty students, fourteen of them indicated that they were definitely interested in participating, and then the other six that they would be interested if they had additional information. So with the help of our athletic director, Todd Jones, we did some digging. Of course, money is always something that we need for uniforms that would run about two to three thousand dollars. There will also need to be a coach in stipend, and Ms. Angela Gross will get to decide that. Transportation is always something that we need to consider. Many of the invitations that take place are in the seven-five-seven area code, particularly at the Virginia Beach Sports Complex and the Blue Williams Sports Complex, which is in Hampton. Most events are held on Saturdays. For each invitational, the registration for the event runs about two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty dollars each. Some additional points for consideration, there's usually one outdoor meet at the high school. And Hanover, Virginia, has a polar bear meet that's held outside. We did look into our counterparts, Rappahannock, they attended about four or five meets last year. There is no regular season schedule, so essentially what you have to do is find these invitationals, and then if you decide to participate, you go ahead and pay your entry fee. So there's no district or there's no region. State competition is really comprised of class one and class two schools, which is a smaller division schools in this area, and then also in the seven-five-seven area. And this was a big conversation last year in our Region A meetings, you know, determining if we're going to have consistency with everyone having a team, whereas some schools may send one or two players or one or two student athletes for a particular event. If we were to take part in this, E H S will have practices outside unless increment whether they may use the hallway or our weightlifting facilities. They would need to be locker rooms by the concession stands to change. And the only other thing that we would consider before additional winter events, such as basketball, wrestling, cheer, or band, if a student wants to participate in indoor, and those two coaches will come with some type of consensus or agreement to allow students to participate in both activities. And we do that now as well, so it wouldn't be too much of a concern. Also, questions?
Board members, any questions?
So have we never had indoor track here at Essex? And it was what, before that people are interested? So the students that is interested, are they the same students pretty much that does regular track?
Some of them are, some of them don't.
And, you know, I'm not a big track person, so what's the difference? I mean, it's just held indoors?
Yes, ma'am.
So would the indoors work with the outdoors as far as?
It's a different season, so the in, great question. So the indoor season is during the wintertime, begins around November and ends around January, whereas the outdoors typically in the spring begins around March, ends in around May.
Is there a difference in the uniforms?
Not really, just want something different for each athletic team. So they theoretically could use the the outdoors, but I don't say they are track, I don't say they are. Yes, sir. That's a good question. Have to, because you ask, that's what I ask. So if you all remember, we had a parent that cried about this, and I think their child, he penned a letter to you or something, that's to that effect. And and of course, Mr. Wind is of is a ten interest in just providing another opportunity for our our students, so.
Perhaps one can make a donation towards the uniforms, we'll talk to them about that.
And I think with twenty students, that's that's a pretty significant interest. So they have my support to receive this.
Okay, so what's the net total cost, you say, Mr. Barnes?
Well, it really depends on how many events we sign up for, coupled with the interest fee and the transportation. So it's it's really difficult to tell. I would say at a minimum, we're looking at five to seven thousand dollars.
How many could they potentially enter? I mean, how many?
That that's a difficult question. We would have to kind of survey the areas, see who's offering up. But as I would assume as many as are already presented with, you can sign up for.
Okay.
I know we need to do some data.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So you see this, if we were able to make this fair arrangements, you see us doing this this year or next year?
We could we could do it this year. The only other thing that we need to do is contact the H S L and make them aware that this is something we want to do and add that. It would be insurance on our athletes, and it's done by sports. So in August, we submit to the H S L, and of course, we're going to participate in. Indoor track wasn't one of them. What we do is just add an addendum to our application, say we're going to offer indoor track. That way, we're covering on the insurance with the H S L.
We have, we do have some local schools that are participating in that right now, don't we? I think Rappahannock is.
Yes, Rappahannock does. We had about four or five events last year that they participated in.
No, Thimble and also.
Mostly district. So in that call, maybe it has another activity for our kids?
Absolutely.
So I know with Mr. Coles, he's here, I know he helps out with the, I guess you call it the outside track?
Outdoor.
Outdoors, outdoors track.
Spring.
Yes, so has he been able to share any information as far as?
We've already begun to pluck and pluck his brain. Dangling that character, it's man.
All right, make sure you pluck him. Yeah, not too hard, Mr. Coles. Give us all you have.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, thank you.
Other board members, any other comments?
Thank you.
Nope.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Next category, fiscal year, the food, twenty twenty-five budget.
Now, it's about money, right?
All right.
So Mrs. Franklin is going to go review for you the budgetary request from our schools and our department. There's simply a request at this time, certainly provide feedback. This is the initial stage of the budget development process for fiscal year twenty-five? Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, ladies. Dr. Thomas, thank you for your time. All right, so I am here to present our our administrators and our principal budget request for our F Y twenty-five budget. So I put Dr. Thomas's name on here, of course. Of course, you're very welcome. So we're going to start with Tappahannock Elementary School. So just how we broke down, these are the categories in the budget. We have salary benefits, purchases, other charges, materials, and capital outlay. So they've requested a paraprofessional, which along with paraprofessional salary, you have PIP benefits. And they have requested ten tables and some chairs to support their building for next year. A little history, this is the beginning of our budget process to start building air budget for next year. So this is the beginning process that we start. We want to start with with the request for what their administrators and principals would like for next year. James H. Terry Intermediate School. Mrs. Calhoun feels with me that she needs a part-time attendance admin person in her office. With the salary, along comes the benefits. Along with that, she is requesting some curtains for her gymnasium. Along with that, she would like some benches for her athletic fields and some bleachers. That's a very small spend that she's requesting for her building. Mr. Barfield was a little more needy. Love giving him a hard time. We met with our budget committee this morning, and we talked about, you know, not that his are not very, 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 very needed. He would like a testing coordinator in his building, a reading specialist, as we were able to fund reading specialists in the other two buildings this year. So why why shouldn't he get one, right, Mr. Barfield? Right, exactly. Also, he would like to have a part-time dean, part-time school counselor in his building. He would like some classroom furniture sets, a full set for three to five of his classrooms, as well as a certified athletic trainer to attend all of his home sporting events. Large, two large screen TVs to put in his front office and common areas that he can put, you know, informational, informational data for his students and for parents. And he needs some fireproof file cabinets for informational purposes. He's the kind of end of road for students, seniors graduate, we have to keep their files pretty much forever. So he has to be the keeper of the of the student records forever, and they have to be in fireproof file cabinets. And they are extremely costly, so that's why that number is so large. And as you can imagine, culinary class food is extremely expensive, and that number is requesting for that budget to go up from from where it is a little bit. It's at fifteen hundred now. I, he didn't give me a number, but I just increased it. I doubled it to another fifteen hundred dollars. As we've all gone to the grocery store, everybody's budget's probably increased, but I doubled. So that's his number, that's a big wish. Hopefully, we can give him most of that. Air Instructional Department, which is led by Dr. Blunt. We have this position now that is in our middle school. It's being funded by our S R three grant, which that grant is going to be ending September of twenty-four. This is a very needed program we have in our middle school. It's our A V E T program, and we're hopefully that we're going to be able to continue to offer this program in our in our middle school. As you can see, it's just pretty much what's offered in that program, the salary, the benefits, the materials, and then the expenses that go along with our A V E T program. And then we have Mr. Butch Grace's department, his operationals in transportation. He would like to increase some of our dress, air bus drivers, field trips and and athletic trips. Athletic trips, those drivers, not only do they do full full runs for the students, and they work extra hours in the evening, he'd like to increase that rate of pay somewhat. As we all know, parts, a lot of things are going up. We need to increase our budget line for air car parts and air bus parts from where we were. And then also, there's an upgrade needed to some of our radio systems and some of our camera systems on some of our buses, some are new, some are aging. We do need to make sure that we are constantly increase, improving those systems there. We need a carport out at air bus garage, and we need to add one additional sped bus to air fleet. And technology, this is such a large spend. John needs to add one piece of software to his budget of five thousand dollars, into a one-time spend. Good job, John. So there we are. This is informational, this is still very prelim. We will not get revenue projections from the state to probably sometime in December. This year, we're under Yumkin's first initial pass of his of his budget. I have no indication of what any revenue is going to look like from him yet, so it's kind of the crystal ball right now of where we're going to look.
So time out, why don't you all remember, we have the governor's budget probably December.
December.
And then we'll have city finance and house appropriations. And so we'll have various iterations of that throughout this, throughout this spring. Quickly, what we have, Miss Franklin here, we, you're familiar with the governor's supplemental appropriation of compensation. We have, in our analysis of that, so far, we have exceeded that as far as the raises, very generous raises that we have provided to our staff, apparently our teachers to date.
that we have provided to our staff, apparently our teachers to date. So we feel that a compensation that would include adjustments to benefits and everything could be potentially on us for moving into next year. And so we are contemplating at this point, I'm calling this as opposed to adjustment of the salaries mid-year. We think that would have potentially an adverse effect on us being able to provide adequate compensation into next year. So that's our initial analysis of, of that. Just be advised of that, and we'll circle back to you in terms of the exact amount.
Yes, sir.
This is the initial, this is the initial process. We will have several dates of public hearing that will take place. This obviously combines both operational and capital improvement, so thank you, Ms. Franklin, for that. And we, just for the public's knowledge, we have our ongoing budget subcommittees. We have today, we'll continue to have that.
That's a lot.
And we'll keep you informed.
I have one question, board member. I've never questioned a couple, just comment, I think there's multiple items, and each of the things that I think could be shifted into the capital lines?
Could, could be, could be. Typically, capital items I like to keep, shouldn't be anything over a total of five thousand dollars. But it's got to be a true tangible item typically, if that goes into capital.
And there, and there are like a duration, if it's going to last more than five years or something, don't we have that kind of criteria as well?
Yeah, it's five, yeah, it's five years, it's the criteria.
And some of that, some of that Gatsby rules have changed somewhat.
Well, it will, it will help our appropriators see fit to appropriate money for us if we, if we segregate it that way.
Right, right.
That would be a recommendation. And then, we had a lengthy discussion this morning about the basic urgent need for the athletic trainer. And I noticed in our current budget, we have a line item that's an amount much larger than this for physical therapy services. So could we consider tapping into that right now?
That is, that's special education. That, that line is what you're talking, is special education. So if that, that can't go to cover this.
Ms. Franklin, you want to speak to that, though?
Yes, so we do have related services, and that's physical therapy for some of our students with disabilities, and that's a contractor that we have, and that's per I U P services.
Okay, is it only if, if needed? Because it hadn't been, well, twelve dollars had been spent.
So what happens is?
Just ask him.
Right. We, we do have a bill of remuneration.
So what happens is, is we budget out, but then we typically just pay it out one line. So we kind of budget, it's just kind of a budgetary, yeah.
I understand.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I can see how that looks one way, but it really kind of, it's.
Thought I had, thought I had a good thought.
I, I wish you had, I wish you had found somebody in there. I wish you had.
The other budgetary issue I want to bring just to your attention, don't quite have a solution at this time, but there's certainly a need, and that is for lighting in our softball fields. We need lighting in our softball fields. I've asked Mister Gross to begin studying that issue. It's an issue of just being equitable with our ladies. This proceeded by tenure, we didn't have lights out there, but we definitely should have lights out there, you know. And so we're going to study that, we will try to circle back to you. We have pitched infrastructure funds, maybe we could utilize for that, but.
Yeah, I think that, if we can get that, that could be something that we could probably work on this year and not need to put in the budget for next year.
Yeah, we, we really need to get that done. So I've asked Mister Gross to begin looking at possible vendors. We'll probably have to undertake a bidding process because the threshold will likely be greater than a hundred thousand dollars.
The other thing, and it may apply, I know when I got the dugouts for the girls, the guys had dugouts, the girls didn't have them. Had to go to the town to get a variance, because they said the softball field itself is too close to the rodeo. And for that reason, we had to go to town meeting, and finally, we got the variance done. So lighting may fall into that kind of.
Okay, that's good to know.
All right.
All for information, thank you.
And we can put, I'm going to put Mister Barfield on the spot. I mean, is the certified trainer something we should look into sooner than later?
Absolutely. And the reason why, you know, we have our student athletics, who may get hurt, you know, whether it's home or away, we often need someone to look at them and evaluate the injuries right away. And in most high schools, most comprehensive, comprehensive high schools have an athletic trainer on staff.
But they typically don't travel, right? It's just typically your home school has them present?
No, it depends on the school.
It just depends on the school, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would any board members serve?
Thank you. Thank you.
School consolidation update, Mr. Dr. Thomas.
So quickly, school consolidation. We're in the process of just trying to get another meeting scheduled with the committee, the disability committee. I think they, they should have for us at least three options that reflects feedback from the instructional department. And so, you know, trying to give, you know, these schedules are hard to, to work through. Randy Jones, who is the principal architect, was the M, which is affiliated with SCANS, it's just been a little challenging getting that together. But I'm going to try to, we're going to try to get that scheduled as soon as possible. I know he promised to send out options in advance, so I'm on it. So just please stay tuned.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, I'm just going to pass these out. It's not something for discussion, I just ask everyone to read them and govern yourselves accordingly. And now, reports from the school board members. Well, I'm just going to say one thing. I want the staff to know I appreciate your presentations tonight, you did a marvelous job. And I think that this school, this isn't itself, and continue to do a marvelous job of educating children. And I have to thank our staff. In other words, we can't do it by ourselves, we hire people to do that. And we have to also thank them for doing, doing this stuff, so can pass off what you're doing. Reverend Paul, I do want, thank you for enlightening us about the bank. They have continued to be a beacon of light for the Essex County Public Schools, including going all the way over to Richmond to perform a F S P A. And I want everybody to know that our young lady and, and Dr., and Miss Franklin represented the Essex County Public School extremely well. So very proud of their accomplishment, and thank you for your support as well. That's all I have, folks.
Mister Chairman, I need to see Mister Barfield, Miss Peters, and Miss Capel. I want to be this.
All right, adjutant motion, get all this thing up.
So move.
Second.
All right, the movement property second, all say aye?
Aye.
It's done, folks.